I now will call to order the January ninth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, the time being six thirty P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Gator?
Here.
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Teets?
Here.
Trustee Wigan?
Here.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Here.
Mayor Shosse? Mayor Shosse absent. Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
So I'd like to move that we make an amendment to add a presentation by staff on the elevated turbidity levels prior to the section B, community participation.
Clerk, please note that this will be added as item A five.
That's it? Do we need a second or a vote on that, or are we just get to add it? This was requested by email by two trustees prior to the meeting, so I'm assuming we can just add it. Just wanted to note that for the record.
Okay.
Anything else? Are there any conflicts of interest on the agenda items this evening? Excellent. Item five A, presentation from staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. I would like to address an inquiry I received regarding the delay in notification of the water's violation. Several factors contributed to the delay in notification of the violation. We are bound by the requirements outlined by C D P H E, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, until we receive their notice. We cannot disseminate information to the public. The timing of events, including utility bill issuance and two holidays, created what we would describe as a perfect storm. From the date of the initial violation on November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, we had a total of five weeks to address and resolve the issue. For your awareness, the violation notice is sent to the named owner of the utility, who happens to be Mayor Shosse, and the Utilities Department. We have found our most effective means of communicating with customers is through utility billing inserts. December bills were scheduled for dispatch on January five, twenty twenty-four, providing a three-week turnaround from December fifteenth, which was the date of the first violation that we received from C D P H E. Notices sent to customers require C D P H E approval, and our staff worked diligently with them until the deadline for approval to be included in the utility bills. This was a state compliance issue, not a water quality problem. Staff had no concerns about Wellington's water quality, and if there was a life safety event, the Board of Trustees would be notified immediately, seeking support from Laramie County Office of Emergency Management, and we would have worked with them to notify the public. My goal is to provide the Board of Trustees with comprehensive and timely information about Wellington. Mayor Shosse reached out to the Utilities Department upon receiving the violation notification, understanding it was not an emergency. Despite our efforts to obtain C D P H E approval in time to inform the Board of Trustees before bill distribution, the short timeframe, holidays, and C D P H E staff turnover made it impossible. Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works, will now provide a brief presentation regarding the turbidity event, aiming to clarify the issue and residents' concerns. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Trustees. Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. And I must admit, I'm having a couple of technical difficulties as the Wi-Fi keeps kicking me off, so I'm trying it again. But I also, Mr. Moose emailed you a link to the file, and perhaps if all fails, you could pull up the PowerPoint. I keep connecting, and then it just kicks me off, and I connect down, and it kicks me off. Let's see if this works.
You accept the panelist promotion?
It hasn't popped up yet. It just tell me my internet connection is unstable. Trustee Weekend, you look lonely over there. You want to scoot over?
I am.
Perfect. How many people does it take? Thank you, Mr. Moose, and thank you for your patience. So again, Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. We were invited to come up this evening, staff, to give a presentation, to give a bit of an overview and some background on the turbidity-related violation that the town utility received in December. So I am going to kind of give an overview of this, a little bit of a timeline, give an opportunity to ask some questions, just give a broader picture of what took place. So why do we perform water quality monitoring? Multiple reasons at the top of that list is to optimize our operations, right? So we're monitoring what's in our water all the time at different points throughout our process so that we can modify operations as needed to ensure we're creating the highest quality water that we can to provide to our residents. We are also required to meet various regulatory requirements through our main regulating agency, which is the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And then the primary parameters that we're looking at during the, oh, excuse me, during most of that water quality monitoring is related to turbidity. Turbidity is a measure of cloudiness in the water. That cloudiness is typically caused by kind of tiny suspended particles that are in the water. That's measured by shining light through that water column, and the reflection from those particles is how you determine how many there are in the water. Now, again, and this was included in the letter, but we'll talk about it a little bit more. Another thing that causes a light to reflect is an air bubble in the water. Large, small, the smaller, the more there are, the higher level of refraction or light reflection that's coming off of that in a turbidometer. So another measurement that we're measuring at various places throughout the water treatment facility, especially at the end, as it's reaching our point of entry to our distribution system, is our chlorine residual in the water. Now, chlorine residual is a measure of, it's showing us how well the water is able to prevent the growth of microbial, of microbes, so prevent microbial contamination in the water, both in the distribution system and our storage tanks. It also helps us identify that we have used the proper amount of chlorine for our disinfection through our disinfection process with the treatment. So a quick overview of where we perform our water quality monitoring in our site. We have twelve total devices that you'll see or locations that you see here. I've got kind of three different, there's a legend there that gives you some like red, black, and blue. I apologize, I was making this today. So there's not the greatest amount of differentiation in here, so there may be some people aren't able to decipher some of these colors very well, and I do apologize about that. But we do have twelve in total. Those red dots that you see highlighted, those are locations where we are reporting measurements that we record to C D P H E as part of our monthly reporting requirements. The black dots, there's two black dots that you see, one is hard to read in the clear well. The other one is outside of the one million gallon storage tank. Those are also locations where we monitor measurements that are reported to C D P H E, but they do not include turbidity. Those red dots are all places where we're monitoring turbidity. The other dots you see there are blue dots. Those are other monitoring locations that we use for our own optimization purposes for the treatment process. Those locations are not reported to C D P H E, they're not required to be reported, but we are monitoring turbidity at all of those, along with other parameters as well. So as you can see, it's a pretty robust monitoring system. Most of these are monitored at the beginning of our system, there, as before it enters the head of the plant to the rapid mix. That's actually monitoring, it's a daily grab sample that we pull to check the raw water turbidity from our source water coming off of the reservoir. That one's not a continuously monitored location. All the other locations that you see here are continuously monitored, and by that it means every minute it's taken a recording. So to get into some of the, so that was just to give you a little background and context for what we're doing out there related to water quality monitoring on the minute-by-minute basis. Kind of a timeline of events that led to the violation notifications that were sent out on January fifth. On November twenty-fifth, and this gets a little weeded, so I apologize, but there were a lot of milestones and events that took place in about a five-week span. There was a turbidity spike in what is, and I apologize about the initials there, but I don't have room to write all the big words. We have our combined filter effluent. And just to point that out, our combined filter effluent is going to be that long line with a red dot that heads into the clear well. So it's combining the filter, the water from all four filters into one pipe. So we have an individual filter effluent monitoring location outside of each one of those four filters, and then we have the combined filter effluent monitoring location at that point before it goes into the clear well. So on November twenty-fifth, we received, had an alarm, SCADA alarm, that an operator returned to the plant to respond to an elevated turbidity reading, a singular location in the facility at that combined filter effluent location. Got to the plant, made sure to check all the other parameters and all the other locations where we monitor this data. So the individual filter effluence, the potable water tanks, the clear well, even on the rapid mix basins, identified that there was not any elevated turbidity levels anywhere else in the facility. So that isolated that issue to that meter, that sample location in particular. So the operator took that meter offline, flipped it upside down, released a whole bunch of air bubbles out of it. Oh, my goodness. Well, that was the problem. Put the meter back in place. All levels went right back to normal, kind of the minute it was returned online. Now, the week of December fourth, so a week later, a little over a week later, we notified C D P H E at that time. So when you have an elevated turbidity level, it is a requirement if it's over a one-point-oh turbidity unit, an ethylometric turbidity unit. If it's over a one-point-oh, you are required to notify C D P H E within twenty-four hours. That was a mistake on our part, and that didn't happen on that November twenty-fifth reading. The, it didn't happen. So once it was identified that we'd had that in review of the data, of all the data at once, as we're compiling data to submit to the state for our monthly reporting, we communicated with C D P H E immediately that week, identified for them that we'd had this elevated reading, reviewed the procedures that we had with staff, procedures that we had in place at that time, ensure that we understand the monitoring requirements and the notification requirements along with that monitoring with all staff. We then supported, gathered up all that data, submitted our data as standard by November tenth, or excuse me, December tenth. That monthly submissions are due to C D P H E on the tenth of the following month, so standard dates. So all that data was submitted to C D P H E on the tenth. We had another air-related turbidity spike, again, exact same location, in that one C F E location, on December twelfth. This time, as we had run through and identified our process improvement opportunity with that previous episode, we contacted and notified C D P H E the same day, communicated with them. A couple of days later, on December fifteenth, we received the actual violation notice for the November violation. So there's a lot of timeline bouncing around here, but we had an episode that took place on November twenty-fifth. We notified C D P H E as soon as we became aware of it, which was with the week of December fourth. It takes them some time. They're not going to issue us a violation until all of the data for that month is, well, they did not issue us a violation until the data for the previous month had been submitted in full. So we received that violation on December fifteenth, both for the maximum turbidity exceedance, and then also there was that failure to notify the department C D P H E in a timely manner. The reporting requirements for public notification for that violation is January fourteenth. So we have thirty days from the time that we receive the violation notification to ensure that we've supplied the public with proper notification. On December nineteenth, a few days later, we received the additional notification violation from C D P H E for that event on December twelfth, with a public notification requirement of January eighteenth. So fast forward to right after Christmas. During this whole time, right, the background, these are the milestones. What's happening in the background is that we have meetings with operators, we're meeting internally with our own staff, we're meeting actually with the Jacobs Process Engineering Design Team that helped us design the new water treatment facility, troubleshooting with some of the locations, what are the points that the air could be entering in the line? It was very evident that it was air. It was also very evident, when you look at this monitoring layout again, the likelihood or the possibility for there to be an introduction of something other than air in this closed system, where the four lines that feed this pipe have run through four individual monitoring devices previously in the span of just a few feet from me to Mayor Protem. These lines are coming together in a larger pipe, and then they're monitored at the end of that. We were very confident that the issue was air entrainment. So we were continuing to monitor and troubleshoot where are places in that line that we could be introducing that air. So through that process, we replaced several pieces of equipment, including an air release valve, the plumbing associated with the sample line that comes off of that combined filter effluent. So it's just a long line of tubing with several joints and ninety-degree bends and that sort of thing. There's also a small pump that pushes it up to the turbidometer, so we were replacing pieces of equipment in that effort. We did receive another, and this is kind of the reason there is so much planning and effort when you tackle these these, troubleshoot these issues, is that every time you go in and you're operating things and changing it, you're at risk of violation again. Right? So the process that we went through to swap out the equipment resulted during that timeline in yet another turbidity spike as more air got entrained into that pipe. So there's just sort of like circular chasing our tail a little bit. So that's essentially what happened to us on the twenty-eighth. On the twenty-ninth, we had another turbidity, air-related turbidity spike in the exact same location, only that singular location, and identified that the couple of pieces of equipment we had put in the previous day didn't fully solve the problem that we had at hand. So on the week of January third, so the day after day, a couple of days after the first of the year, I developed the public notification requirement. There is essentially a report writer that you go through on the C D P H E website that generates the language that's required for you to report in your public notifications. There's a limited amount of information that you're asked to provide, such as the dates, the elevated levels, what you're doing to solve the problem, when you're going to submit the letter. Those are the main points that we get to put in that letter. The rest of the language that's generated in that is required by the state, is outside of our control, and is very black and white, and rather alarming in places. Especially when you understand, when you have the level of confidence that we did of the cause of the problem being air in those lines. So, so in quick succession over last week, we developed that notification, sent it to C D P H E for their final review. The biggest reason for that review is that we were looking to combine both of those notifications into one letter so that we can, we're not having to send out multiple rounds and notify all at once. So that was the additional reason to make sure that we had their thumbs up and approval that it was fine for us to do that. We received that okay from them on January fourth. That happened to be the same day that we also installed another piece of equipment on that line. It's a fine air bubble trap. It's actually a HAWK piece of equipment. We use a lot of HAWK equipment in both of our facilities. And then we received that approval on the fourth, the same day that that piece of equipment was installed. Sent that, that notification then went out to the public with bills that went out on January fifth. We have thus far, it's January ninth, so it's about four days, it's not a lot. We have seen very positive results from those initial results from those mitigation strategies, specifically since we put that bubble trap in place. We have not had any air-related turbidity spikes since that installation. And we have gone through a couple of process changes at the facility that could trigger that, that had triggered those high air-related turbidity spikes previously, and have not seen it. So fingers crossed, as we're still monitoring that situation, determining if there's additional measures that need to be put in place. I did want to show a couple of pictures just to see, to identify how very, very tiny can cause such a large problem. So that picture on the left is the vial that is actually in the turbidometer, shining the light through. You can see the bottom side of that vial where these bubbles are trapped, right, in that turbidometer. And that picture on the right is a photo of our working overtime fine air bubble trap that is trapping a great deal of air. And I did want to make sure that, I touched on, I know in the end, there was, kind of last week, there was a flurry of communication that went out, and it all came out very quickly as we were trying to meet a deadline to get the notifications in the utility bills. That is our primary, easiest way to notify our residents, our customers, all at the same time. I do want to note that with further discussion with C D P H E today, we do need to send out another notification only to those seventeen hundred or so residents or customers that do not receive paper bills, that receive only electronic. We are required to deliver either hand-deliver or mail a hard copy to every service connection that we serve. And so there are seventeen hundred and fifteen-ish that will go out in the mail this Friday. So I'm glad that we sent that out as early as we did, that allows us time to correct that, send this additional notification, and still be well within the window of our notification window prior to January fourteenth. And with that, that was a lot of information and a long timeline, and I'm happy to back up to any of those previous slides if you all have questions or to that monitoring location diagram, if that's helpful too, in thinking about how all of this took place.
Any questions from the board?
I do want to thank our staff. This, that is all of the holidays covered in the last two months, that you guys have been working overtime in emergency situations and making sure that you notify the community as fast as possible and well before deadlines. So thank you for your hard work, more overtime than ever, and more stress during the holidays than I would hope that you ever have again in the future. So thank you. The fact that there is not a threat to public safety is wonderful because, of course, that's all of our top priorities. So we are really happy that that is the case, and I do appreciate the communications that came out. I know that mass panic comes when you hear concerns about water. I understand that, right? We drink Wellington water at my house, too. So, but to be assured that there isn't a threat to public safety is very important, and to understand everything that you explain here in lots of detail, including the timeline and actually the monitoring piece, which is where the issue was, not necessarily the quality of the water, is such a great relief. And I hope that people here can disseminate that information, maybe even as rapidly as the panic. So that would help everyone, of course, to be a better community, to feel safe, to feel secure in Wellington. So I guess that's my challenge to us up here, everyone here who's listening and hearing the exact facts of what's going on and the fact that we are safe and secure. Please spread that information as aggressively as any concerned information you would too, because that's also very important. Thank you.
Just had a couple of questions. Thank you very, thank you very much for putting this together on short notice. I know there's a lot of people that come to us as the board, the concerns, and trustee Teets and myself, we're like, it'd be great if we can just put this together. So I appreciate you guys pulling this together in like twenty-four hours, because I sent it to Patty on Monday, and she's on vacation then. So appreciate the timeline, and thank you for explaining all this, really helps on that. I only had two questions, so one, and thank you for answering my question about the delays, so that C D P H E does not allow us to notify trustees or anybody else until a certain point?
Yeah, we do need to receive the violation from C D P H E in order to have the actual violation in hand, to know to know the language that it is, to know the requirements for it, to know the reporting requirements, notification requirements. So we have to have that in hand before we can submit anything to the public.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And then the second question I had, and you mentioned on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, we also, when we were fixing things, are we going to receive additional violations for that, or do they understand we're working on it, so there's not going to trigger additional, and then we're having to send stuff out again?
No, that's why, in the violation letter that went out, there was, those dates were listed as well, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. So the violation that you received for this particular maximum turbidity threshold violation, it's actually, it's for the month. And so you don't receive an additional one every time. That violation covers essentially the whole month. Now, you do need to report if there are multiple times within that, that there was an exceedance that was part of the delay to, or not delay, scramble at the very end to make sure we got those additional dates included in that letter that was going out just, you know, a few days later. So no, no additional violations.
Perfect. That was all I had. Thank you.
Trustee Mason?
Just a few comments, and I really appreciate staff working overtime on this one. I actually have, I used to work at a HAWK company in Loveland in a, what seems like a prior life now. So I do have some familiarity with turbidometers and that sort of thing. I do obviously want to stress to the public that the language in the C D P H E notice is mandatory and perhaps perhaps a bit frightening, but I do want to stress that, you know, there were no quality issues as far as the water goes. And I would actually point out that if you take your kitchen sink, for example, and the aerator that's installed on your kitchen sink, if you were to pour yourself a glass of water and measure that with a turbidometer just coming right out of the tap, you would actually see very, very high amounts of turbidity in that water sample, only because there's air bubbles suspended in that water at that time. So I just do want to stress that, obviously, there were no quality issues in this case, and that we're looking at just air bubbles suspended in the water. And really, really what I'd just like to get back to and just ask that staff, really, that we ensure that we are properly reporting to C D P H E in the future, really making sure that we're getting those timelines where they need to be. So, but I do thank everybody for the overtime put in on this, and I appreciate it.
Trustee Weekend?
Just want to thank you for the troubleshooting that you guys done. You know, you were able to pretty much centralize it and take care of it, and we haven't had a reoccurring problem since then, so it looks like that is the problem. And yeah, appreciate the reporting and how the staff really did a good job. So, thank you.
Trustee Teets?
Okay, I am exceedingly grateful for the effort put into this presentation. Thank you, Megan, for just reviewing that. I would love to share this video and be able to let people go and view the information firsthand as well. I don't know if that's something that we would be able to post as far as an information item on the Facebook page or maybe just add it as a link if someone wants to view this further in the water bill sent out for the following month. I think that people being able to access and hear the information firsthand might be useful. The, the only issue that I really have at the end of the day is I want to know if we received any fine violations for the lack of twenty-four-hour reporting, and also trying to figure out, I understand it was, I think, December fourth, when you received the first notice of the violation. But we, as trustees, after that first notice, didn't receive notice till hours before our actual residents did in January, when it seems like we could have experienced that notification a lot sooner. Then it wouldn't have been as surprising to, I know me as a trustee getting that information just mere hours before it went out to the public. It possibly would have given us more time to get educated and react if someone reached out to us personally, and we could have had better explanations upfront. But I am grateful for the presentation, and I think this will assist residents in being able to view and understand, first of all, what that notice meant, but secondly, that the water is still safe and within regulation and requirements for our town. That's all.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that detailed presentation. Thank you trustee Gator and trustee Teets for suggesting the opportunity to present this detailed information to help ease the fears and concerns of the community regarding a potential public safety concern, which is not a public safety concern at all. Thank you. Okay, now is the time for public comments. Members of the public wishing to comment on non-agenda items, please sign in on the sheet behind the podium and state your name into the microphone for the record. Everyone providing comments will have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Partem, trustees. My name is Greg Stolzseif. I'm a resident of Wellington, a customer of Wellington Water, as well as a forty-year veteran of the drinking water industry. I understand the operation of a drinking water treatment facility and the management of a water utility very intricately, as well as the regulations involved. I had come here to urge a calm and reasoned response. I thank you that that is what I have already seen from the trustees, certainly not what I saw over the weekend from my fellow residents and customers. But I'm going to go ahead and offer my comments for their benefit as they may be out there listening as well. I managed a eerily similar response, response to an eerily similar incident in another water utility in two thousand and sixteen. The parallels are just blowing my mind here. And down to the failure of the operator to realize that he was required to report that within twenty-four hours. And that is, that is not a dereliction of duty per se. That is a very easy mistake to make when you identify the cause of the problem. You realize that there is no public health risk. It's very easy to reason that this is not actually a violation. It does not need to be reported. And it's quite shocking to find out that the regulators disagree with you. But this was, this was air bubbles. There was no risk to public health at any time. I, I am a, an active employee of another water utility in the region, and I drink Wellington water on a daily basis. I cook with it. I bathe with it. I have high confidence in the staff here. Now, that is not to be said that this should be let go, brushed under the rug, or anything of that. Staff does need to be held accountable, as it sounds like they are already progressing. What they need to be held accountable to, unlike some of those with torches and pitchforks on Facebook, is a robust root cause analysis to identify and assess the causes that led to the malfunction and to developing and improving processes and procedures to ensure that it does not reoccur in the future. That is how you handle incidents like this. There needs to be an environment where mistakes that happen can be brought forward safely, discussed in a calm, reasonable manner, and solutions determined and implemented. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. Mario Quinones, Wellington resident, and I also drink Wellington water. I'm really excited to hear the information, and I'm glad that things have turned out the way they have. The one thing I did want to bring up is I was just wanting to maybe understand if there was going to be some clarification to the Coloradan that wrote a report about this. And the one thing that I didn't hear is anything about a power outage that required some, some generators to be kicked on. And then the other thing that the Coloradan said is that the town advised pregnant people, elderly, and those with infants or severely compromised immune systems. I take care of a little boy who's not even four years old. He has a severely compromised immune system. He has a G-tube, and we feed him through the G-tube with Wellington water. So that was the only concern that I had, and I was really pretty much, pretty scared about that. So I'm just wondering where the Coloradan got that information from? And if there was going to be some clarification as to the power outage and how the town advised those people that were said, that, actually, it said to reach out to their doctor to see if they should be drinking that water. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Thank you, Mr. Stouts, for your thoughtful comments and input regarding the Wellington water. Thank you, Mr. Quinones, for your thoughtful comments and concerns regarding the Wellington water. Moving on, agenda item proclamation. Next, we have a proclamation from Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Whereas on a late summer day in nineteen sixty-three, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. stood in the National Mall in Washington, DC before thousands of demonstrators who had gathered to march for freedom, justice, and equality. On that day, Dr. King shared a dream that has continued to inspire a nation, to bring justice where there is injustice, freedom where there is oppression, peace where there is violence, and opportunity where there is poverty. Today, people of all backgrounds continue that march, raising their voices to confront abuses of power, challenge hate and discrimination, protect the rights to vote, and access quality jobs, healthcare, housing, and education. And whereas in recognition of Dr. King's actions and example in serving all people in our great nation, the town of Wellington will join in its state and federal government counterparts to celebrate and memorialize Dr. King. Now therefore, I, Ashley McDonald, Mayor Partem of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim Monday, January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as Martin Luther King Day, or I'm sorry, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and urge all our citizens to join in celebration of Dr. King and the values that he and his memory represents in our community. In witness hereof, I hear and to set my hand and cause the seal of town Wellington for that this day affixes the ninth day of January, two thousand and twenty-four. And I will ask that trustee Gator receive this proclamation on behalf of the town.
Can I get a picture with?
Yeah, please.
That'd be so helpful.
Fantastic. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, excellent. Moving on to the consent agenda. Will the clerk please read the title of the items on the consent agenda?
C one, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. C two, resolution number one, two thousand and twenty-four, posting public notice. C three, resolution number two, two thousand and twenty-four, approving a three-mile plan for municipal annexations. C four, resolution number three, two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution approving an amendment to the Baker Tilly US LLP engagement letter to provide financial management services to the town of Wellington.
Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second that.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Partem McDonald.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, and the consent agenda is approved.
Thank you. Next, we'll proceed to action items. Will the clerk please read the title of item D one?
D one, public hearings, saddleback subdivision first replat.
This being a quasi-judicial hearing, it's the practice of this board and practice of the town in the past that remote participation in these hearings is not permitted. So trustee Teets will not be allowed to participate remotely on this one.
Thank you. Mr. Cody Byrd, the Director of Planning, will present this item. Can Mr. Byrd please review the public hearing procedures?
Thank you, Mayor Partem. Cody Byrd, Planning Director. And yes, as many of you have heard many times, I do like to review the public hearing procedures. Bear with me. It's a benefit to those who are attending remotely and in the room. We typically start at the beginning of your meeting, you ask for any conflicts of interest on agenda items. And as a general practice, we also ask the same thing on a public hearing procedure. We also ask for disclosure of any ex parte communications. Ex parte communications are communications that occur outside of the public meeting. And the reason we disclose those is so that everyone in the room who's making a decision on that item has an opportunity to hear the same information to inform their decision. And I'll ask for, or I'll encourage Mayor Partem to ask for those here in just a moment. In our public hearing procedures, town staff is going to present, introduce the item with the information pertaining to the background and nature of the request. We'll also have an opportunity for the applicant, in this case, Mr. Darren Roberson with Sage Holmes, is the applicant. We'll have an opportunity to present additional information if desired. And following the presentations, if the board has any clarifying questions, we'll be happy to answer those at that time. Then we'll proceed on to the public comment portion of the meeting. That's when members of the public residents will have an opportunity to have their voices heard. They typically have three minutes unless the board grants additional time. And following the conclusion of the public comments, the applicant, Mr. Roberson, will have an opportunity to provide any final closing comments. Town staff will have an opportunity to provide additional closing comments from a staff perspective. And then we will conclude the public hearing. Following the public hearing, you have a second agenda item, D two, which is an ordinance adopting the, for adopting the final plat for saddleback subdivision first replat. Well, we do this as two separate items so that we can conclude the public hearing and then do deliberations and take formal action following that. Any questions on the meeting or the public hearing procedures?
Only question I had is when we're deliberating in the public hearing item, should that just be our hold deliberations of everything? Or should that be held over outside of just general comments to the actual ordinance where we discuss the replat? Just from our knowledge of, I don't know if there's a strong rule one way or the other. Since we technically closed the public hearings, it's really just, okay, have we satisfied the public hearing? But then the second item is actually voting on the replay. I just didn't know if it matters to you where we have our deliberations, because you have it under the public hearing. Are we deliberating the public hearing there, or are we actually deliberating the item? Does it matter? I don't care either way. I just want to know if you have preference.
You know, it's a great question. I'm not sure that I have a preference. I'm looking to Mr. Sapienza.
I think usually the deliberation will take place during the ordinance portion of it. The public hearing portion is really about getting information and asking for clarification on information. So once you're satisfied that you have the information you need, we'll close out the public hearing. You go over to deliberation, and then it's about the board deliberating.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. And great question. Thank you. Any other questions on procedure?
Great. Right now would be the perfect time to disclose any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications. Excellent. Thank you. I now open the public hearing for this item in the time being seven thirteen PM.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please proceed with the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Partem. By way of introducing this item, many of you have seen this. It's been before the, the board of trustees in the past as a preliminary plat and a rezon request. We had a work session on the, the past development agreement that was in place for this subdivision as part of the preparation for hearing the preliminary plat and rezon request. And the planning commission has also heard this a couple of times in public hearings for rezoning preliminary plat and final plat. The property itself that we're discussing is the saddleback subdivision. This is a proposed replat of portions of that subdivision. The property itself is located east of I twenty-five near the south end of town on County Road sixty or GW Bush Avenue. The property is currently platted as a hundred and fifty-three, single-family lots. The property was, the development proposal was brought in front of the planning commission and the Board of Trustees, and in July of two thousand and thirteen, this Board of Trustees did approve the rezoning. The rezoning request was from low-density residential to medium-density residential, R two to R three. So that rezoning has been approved. And in that same meeting, the preliminary plat was presented, and this Board of Trustees recommended approval of the preliminary plat, which allowed the applicant to proceed to final plat, which is where we're at. The quick history on the reason for those requests in this final plat or replat hearing tonight was the original development was proposed and approved in two thousand and eighteen, early two thousand and eighteen. During the time since that, a number of things have changed in Wellington, in the marketplace. Interest rates have changed, construction, construction costs have inflated dramatically during that time. And a combination of those factors, as well as town staff taking a look at how this subdivision was approved on a property that doesn't have a non-potable irrigation system and beyond town-treated water, and with our recent and ongoing efforts to continue to improve our water efficiency, all those, those factors kind of culminated in staff asking the developer, is there a different way we can think about this subdivision property to make it more efficient? And so that kind of primed the reasons for looking at this subdivision a little bit differently. But an underlying theme was we still want to encourage and protect the original intent of this subdivision for the single-family development and the original lot layout that connects roadways, public infrastructure, and provides the amenities that we come to expect in our neighborhoods. So those things being considered, what we've kind of concluded with the applicant is prepared and gone through these processes is a subdivision replat that essentially takes the same road configuration that was approved in two thousand and eighteen and basically narrows up the lots by a few feet to eliminate the wide side yards on the property and make the lot sizes a little bit smaller to limit the amount of irrigation water needed to sustain sod in those areas. The town also adopted, between the original approval and the current approval, the town adopted our Waterwise Landscape and Irrigation Design Manual, which has recommendations for residential properties for minimizing exterior water use and still supporting attractive landscapes. It was an important role, too. So with all of those things combined and the past kind of considerations, this replat is presented that fulfills the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, several of our board's strategic goals, water efficiency plan, and really rethinks the way in which this subdivision was originally created and some cost increases over time and some different ways of looking at that as part of our proposal to amend the development agreement to reflect cost repays. I wanted to quickly do a, an overview of the procedure for final plat. I know this has been something that our board and planning commission have asked for a lot more recently is to really fully understand the processes that we're going through. I mentioned the rezon and the preliminary plat. On a final plat hearing, the town staff collects all the application materials. We review that. We conducted an extensive technical review of engineering documents, planning documents, legal documents, and we refer those out to different reviewers, collect the feedback, and make sure that those plans and technical documents satisfy all the town's applicable criteria. We also, on a final plat, we go through the planning commission, which has recommended approval. And in this case, the Board of Trustees makes the final decision based on all the information and recommendations. When we review a final plat, we review the findings for approval. And I wanted to highlight those briefly, as well as the general satisfaction of those. I'm happy to answer all the details. There's more detailed information in your staff report that I don't intend to go through line by line, but I'm happy to answer any questions. But of general note, I wanted to highlight that the first finding for approval on a final plat is that it conforms with the preliminary plat and incorporates recommended changes that were discussed at preliminary. This final plat in your packet does satisfy that criteria. It's essentially the same as the preliminary plat. A couple of changes were noted, the highlights of which were at the preliminary plat, the Board of Trustees had some questions about lot sizes and a desire to match the lot sizes with the minimum lot sizes of the R two zoning that was in place before. So the applicant was asked to make those changes, and they've done that on this preliminary plat. All lots meter exceed the minimum six thousand six hundred square foot lot size of the R two low-density residential zone category. And there was also discussed in that preliminary plat hearing that the number of lots through the density change and the zone change request would be higher than maybe desirable for honoring that original intent. And through the, the changes, the applicant reduced the number of lots from two hundred and eleven to two hundred and five and still maintained the overall layout and intent of the subdivision. The second finding is that the development proposal complies with all the design and development standards of Article Five of the Land Use Code. In your staff report is a more detailed analysis there. Staff did go through, checked each of those boxes to make sure that, that the substantial compliance was obtained. And I don't want to dwell on each one specifically, but I do want to highlight the landscaping provisions specifically, since that was part of the genesis of this particular proposal. We did ask the developer to We did ask the developer to consider our recommendations for residential water wise landscapes and Zerick landscaping requirements. They have taken that to heart and demonstrated that they can meet those criteria through their landscape design proposal, both for the open space and for individual lots for the front yards. The developers proposing a Zerick design for all the individual lots within the subdivision in accordance with our water wise design criteria and with C I O, the Common Interest Ownership Act or the state statutes. And the developer is going to have the builder install the front yards and the side yards to ensure compliance with that standard for the raw water reduction that's proposed. We included in your packet because we wanted to make sure that this could be enforceable. There is the language, excerpted the landscaping language from the private declarations and private covenants, demonstrate how that would be accomplished. That was important to staff that we want to make sure that if we're recommending a reduction on the raw water based on Zerick principles, that there's a way to make sure that that's going to be consistently applied throughout and would be achievable. And we feel confident in that language. We also included a landscape and water conservation notice. When, when property owners buy an individual lot for their residence, they have to review a ton of paperwork and they're asked to sign at the end and say they read it all. I don't know anyone who sat through a closed and read every single line of every private declaration. We asked the developer to provide a simple one page. It turned out being two, but a, a simple short document explaining that there are landscaping requirements, there are Zerick principles and our water conservation practices in place for this subdivision as a notice to homeowners buying these lots. And last, I wanted to highlight the open space. The original proposal for this had turf and sod in the open space areas, which are large open space areas. We asked the developer to rethink that and the developer has come back with a landscape plan for the open spaces and the street lawns. It's in your packet along with an irrigation plan demonstrating that they are complying with our Zerick principles for our open space requirements and accordance with their Waterways Landscape and Irrigation Design Manual. And the calculations for the expected raw water demand requirement for that landscape is identified in those tables there. What staff is supporting is the overall reduction for the raw water requirement based on those detailed plans and calculations, which comes out to about one acre foot of irrigation water for all the open space areas. That's primarily because there will be no irrigation water for the, no permanent irrigation water for the landscape for the native grasses. There'll be a permanent drip line installed to support the trees and shrubs within those areas. Overhead spray for the turf areas for entry features in the pocket park. Mouthful. And then the final finding is that the applicable technical standards have been met. The applicable technical standards are engineering design, plan and profiles for water lines, sewer lines, our storm drainage, roads, lighting standards, soils reports, you name it, traffic impact studies. All those technical documents have been reviewed, evaluated and recommended for approval by town staff. I think most of those are final complete and staff's hands with a few that are just awaiting final signatures. So we're, we've moved through those and staff recommends that that compliance or finding for approval has been satisfied. All of this being said, the planning commission reviewed this in September, the final plat in September and recommended approval. Your town staff recommends approval of this replat of Saddleback subdivision. And I want to conclude my presentation for the background and the basis for this proposal. You do have presentation from the developer if they choose to do so in your public comments and then I'm be happy to answer additional questions. Mr. Roberson, do you have any comments you'd like to add?
Darren Roberson and Tom Dugan. That's a hard act to follow with Cody, but there is one correction, guys. We had heard that we wanted to be over sixty-six hundred square feet on the lots. We went back and went from two hundred and eleven to two hundred and five lots. Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's three lots are sixty-five, fifty. Just so you know, we weren't able to do it on all two hundred and five lots, but we did, we were above sixty-six hundred on ninety-nine percent of them, just so you know. And nothing's bulletproof, guys, but working with town staff, working with Cody, working with engineering, working with Patty. We tried to make the covenants and the bylaws water restrictive, something that could be enforced because I don't think anybody can really enforce backyards on home buyers. But we felt like we could enforce front yards and, and hold the HOA or the covenants and HOA accountable for its residents and with penalties if the open space is overwatered because it will be metered. Again, without Cody's comments, town staff's comments, that's why it kind of took so long to get here. But we're trying to make this subdivision water wise. And by far, this is a wiser decision than having the large lots that we had. So.
Any questions for?
If the, if the board has any clarifying questions, I just maybe be careful not to get into deliberations before your public comments.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll all send you guys down the line. Just keep a little bit of order here.
Just, I know I have some concerns over my addition. Is there going to be any multifamily lots over there, Tom?
Again, here is the plat.
This would be original. This is the current.
All single family.
All single family.
New construction.
Perfect. Yeah, I know another big concern we have over on our side of town is traffic pattern. But I think that's something that the city needs to approach big time and that's.
Community problem.
Right, absolutely.
One subdivision problem.
And I think that should be number one on our agenda too. Thank you.
Yeah. Hundred and fifty-three lots or two hundred and five is not going to make a difference on the street life.
Great. Trustee Mason.
Just a real minor one, Mr. Roberson. I think Commissioner Chalet had asked about bike lanes on the north and south roads. I was just curious if you had any clarification on that by chance.
The question was on bike lane, bike lanes on Ronald Reagan. As engineering, do you recall if the bike lane striping was included in the final plan set for Ronald Reagan? I think there, one of the, as, as Mr. Gowing comes up here, one of the design challenges with Ronald Reagan, having a hard time getting that L in there. One of the design challenges there was the existing conditions of the storm drainage pond having kind of causing that road width to be a little bit narrower. So I think we definitely took a look at it. We'll see if we got that in the final plans that are not. If it's, if it wasn't possible, it was because of engineering constraints on the other conditions. Mr. Gowing, did you have?
I think that was, I think Cody kind of touched on it. The, the section, the new section that's getting built over to, on the, along the north side over to Saddleback is a kind of a constricted section because of sitting on that existing berm. I don't know if you guys have ever seen what that looks like. There's a big ditch on one side and a development on the other. So frankly, there's just not room for the entire section through there. Furthermore, we don't see a whole lot of traffic. The, the GMA is just right there. So it's not like we really anticipate a whole lot of traffic going towards the east there or coming from the east either. It's really just the traffic from, from Saddleback and that would be it. So.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Trustee Daly.
No questions. Very thorough. Thank you.
Trustee Gator.
So the question I had is I know, I think Cody and I might have misheard, but you talked about there was a reduction in raw water requirements because of how the open space was being set up. So is the raw water requirement, is that for per home, for the whole development? And is that being changed as a part of this replat from what was originally required?
Thank you, Trustee Gator. Great question. And I believe the information was in my staff report, but I didn't maybe cover it all in my presentation. So I'm happy to go back on that and provide the additional detail. The short answer to your question is both the, on a per lot basis and for the open space dedication. The way we looked at this, the town's typical requirement for raw water for a home is two parts. If the, if the home does not have, or it's not in a subdivision that has a non-potable irrigation system, the, each home is required to satisfy the raw water contribution requirement for indoor and outdoor. Currently, the town's policies are point, zero point two five or quarter acre foot for indoor and a quarter acre foot for outdoor. The quarter acre foot for indoor for this subdivision isn't going to change. And if the town has to, you know, determines we need to change that in the future, they'd pay the then current cash and lieu or raw water dedication to satisfy the indoor. The outdoor on a per lot basis, staff is recommending a reduction from the point two five to a point two. It's a zero, point zero five acre foot reduction. And that's based on the irrigation and design calculations for Zerick principles for the front yards and side yards and the side, the street tree lawn for each individual lot. Steph, I think I can honestly say really beat that one up with a, a significant level of conservatism. Town staff responded repeatedly that our concern is we were not law enforcement to enforce this. We want these designs to be conservative enough that we're not going back and, and rethinking the, the calculations. And we feel we've reached a reasonable recommendation of the point two acre feet per lot. The open space, the original calculation based on turf grasses was I think approximately twelve or twelve point two acre feet of water needed to satisfy the, the original landscape design. And following a very thorough review of the open space and pocket park requirements for Zerick landscaping and zero permanent irrigation on the, the native grasses, which is the bulk of the, of the open space, brought that down to the one point zero three acre feet to satisfy the permanent irrigation for the trees and shrubs and the pocket park.
I'll add that we're still going to put an irrigation system in, in the open space dry land and we'll pay the bulk water rate for the first three years while it's being established.
I could just add one clarifying statement. So the, the primary reason why the raw water dedication for irrigation went down is because the lots are smaller. They're smaller than our typical lot that we use to calculate that point two five. So it was really more about that than it was about anything else.
Thanks for that, Mr. Gowing. I failed to mention that and appreciate you stepping up and reminding us. And on a, the way we did that and to kind of just kind of build off of what Mr. Gowing presented, we based that on a subdivision wide average. We looked at the expected square footage of the house, square footage of the driveway, all the impervious surfaces that would not have irrigation on it, then took a level of conservatism to how much water would be applied for a Zerick landscape in the front and side yards and allowed the backyard to fall within our normal provisions where neither the HOA nor the town staff really want to be involved in how individual homeowners choose to landscape and, and maintain the backyards that they enjoy.
Just to make sure that I'm clear for the open space, so the, because I know I did say that we are going to be irrigating like the recreational area, but outside of that, the first three years, we'll be doing the bulk watering to get everything established. But then after that, it'll be the drip lines for shrubs, trees, and then watering the recreation area. But outside of that, we're not using any treated water. Is that correct for the open spaces?
That's correct. I'd throw in the entry monumentation features. So kind of the, at the, the primary entrances, the subdivision, usually there's some signage and some additional landscaping that would need drip irrigation for those areas as well. And those designs and the landscape plans in your packet. So if you wanted to look and see the shrub tree placement and combination there, and those designs and layouts are supported in accordance with our landscape and irrigation design manual.
And we feel comfortable that we're going to be in a good place for water requirements, even with this, the, the recreational area and everything else, we're, we're not going to fall short on that.
Yeah, we do. Yeah. And, and that's right. The, the drip line irrigation for those spaces that you just described will be metered with the town's meters for those. So we'll be able to monitor that data. There are, there is some language in the proposed amendment to the development agreement that talks about the establishment period for the landscaping. And landscaping usually needs a little bit more water on the front end to be able to get it established. And once it is established, that, that need backs off. And subject to, if the HOA were to request supplemental irrigation during a drought year, if the town had available water resources and wasn't under restrictions that would prevent use for that, the HOA would be able to request that and pay the, the town's rates at that time for that additional water if everything was agreed to.
Okay. So with this being metered, would this be billed to the HOA then? For, they would be billed for this and would it be billed as residential? Would it be billed as commercial or would it be billed as irrigation water?
For the open spaces would be billed to the HOA, yes. For the HOA to pay that, they'd collect what fees they needed to fit in their residence through their association fees.
Which tiers would that fall under? We have three.
The irrigation. Okay, we'd go with the irrigation rate. The nuance about the, the temporary, is it because we're not getting water rights? We're charging a bulk rate for that. The bulk rate kind of includes the, an extra cost for the cost of the actual raw water.
Thank you.
First off, I want to thank you for increasing the size of the lots. I think you heard us talking and I know it didn't make that much of a difference, but we appreciate the compromise at that point. Do you, and I don't know if this is the spot to even ask it, minimum and maximum square footage for homes? That's going to be over there? Just so people know.
I don't see any changes in the size or square foot of the single family. I mean, you can still.
Like what was in the meadows?
In the meadows. Correct. Yeah. I mean, different configuration, not as wide. You won't see as many three car garages. You won't see houses spread out. The more the house spreads out, the more backyard there is, which means there's more grass. On these lots, the houses are going to be more front to back, which means actually there's less sod in the backyard with more square footage. So again, more water savings too.
Any further clarifying questions from the board? Excellent. Okay. Now we will open this item for public comment. Members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item, please sign in on the sheet behind the podium and state your name for the record. Everyone providing comments will have three minutes to speak. If you'd like, you can fill out the sheet after you speak. Seeing there are no public comments, I now close the public hearing for this item, the time being seven thirty-seven P M. Does the applicant have any closing comments? No? Okay. Does staff have any closing comments?
I'm sure it was long-winded that I covered enough. If there's no further questions, I don't have any closing comments.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Bird. Okay, we will move on. Will the clerk please read the title of item D two?
Do we need to officially vote to close the public hearing or just no action need for that? I just don't remember.
There should be no action.
Okay.
Item D two, ordinance number one, twenty twenty-four, approving a final subdivision plat for Saddleback subdivision first replat and approving amendments to the development agreement.
Oh, that's me. Mr. Bird will present this item. Mr. Bird.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Just wanted to quickly acknowledge that in, in an effort to save paper and not duplicate attachments, many of the attachments for plat landscape and all the things we just discussed in the public hearing item are also applicable to this item. We just didn't want to duplicate it. In addition to those documents, what we did include in this agenda pack item is the proposed development agreement amendment for this replat. There's, I could probably spend the rest of the night explaining all the nuance and detail of that. And I don't want to do that. I want to be respectful of time, but I did want to hit a couple of highlights. We reviewed your findings for approval and the recommendations from planning commission and staff. The development agreement highlights is, is probably the, the piece that is the most germane to this portion of the conversation. So I wanted to kind of acknowledge a few things that are in this construct. The existing agreement from twenty eighteen is going to, most of that language is going to remain in force and effect except as specifically modified in the amendment language in your packet. So the rest of the twenty eighteen agreement would remain intact. It covers general construction standards, applicability of town requirements, permitting, construction costs, all those things are pretty much the same as they are today. Our standards haven't really changed much in that. So there's really no need to update those. The proposed amendments to the development agreement does include the raw water reduction that we explained and staff vetted and recommends the point two acre feet per lot and the one point oh three acre feet for the out, permanent open space irrigation. The development agreement also includes cost sharing for oversizing the sanitary sewer line that runs through the property in anticipation of additional development in the future. There's no better way to save money than to have it done all at once than to go back and do it a second time later to make it larger. Um, and there's no better way to save money than to have it done all at once than to go back and do it a second time later to make it larger. We also required offsite improvements, um, for waterline looping and road construction for pieces of Ronald Reagan and, and, um, GW Bush that should have been constructed with the previous development. The requirement is to extend utilities and roads all the way to the edge of the plat. That didn't happen. We told Mr. Roberson, we're not letting you build this without correcting those past deficiencies. But we did agree that in twenty eighteen that there would be a reasonable cost share to accomplish that since there was kind of a drop ball on two parties there. Um, so that's in this agreement. What we did from the twenty eighteen agreement to the proposed changes was to update all the construction costs with today's dollars for those public improvements to make sure we're working with real money, um, not six-year-old estimates. And the result of that effort, the costing, cost of increase with construction inflation over time. And what we saw was road, pipe, concrete, all those costs have climbed. We updated those estimates and what town staff came back was, um, we agreed in twenty eighteen that this was the amount per lot per impact fee or enterprise fund that we could support, um, for those cost sharing endeavors. Town staff vetted this pretty hard in this process and we replied to the developer. We're unwilling to recommend increasing the per lot amounts that we agreed to in twenty eighteen. We feel like with the strain on our enterprise funds and our, especially our water and sewer utilities, that we could not continue to go back and tap those, uh, or shouldn't use the word tap. Um, we shouldn't continue to draw from those revenue sources any further than we already recommended. And so we said, those are hard numbers for us. We can't support more than that. Um, storm drainage and road were capped in twenty eighteen. Those caps haven't really changed. That's the maximum amount of impact fee for drainage that the town keeps. The rest goes to Box Elder Stormwater Authority. Roads is capped. We have other road improvement projects that need those funds. Um, so we said, we could agree that the additional lots generates additional revenue. So we would obsess the same per lot, uh, cost for each of those funds, um, for all two hundred and five lots, which generate additional reimbursement to the developer, um, as well as additional revenues to the town. What we also, um, identified was in the, um, with new information and, and further sharpening pencils, the twenty-four inch sanitary sewer line that was originally required is not necessary under our new and improved storm or, uh, sanitary sewer collection system master plan. And what we said was let's reduce that to a twelve inch line. So that cost came down significantly for both parties. All the cost implications considered, it comes down to essentially the per lot costs, um, for each of those impact fee funds. And there was still a gap from what the town staff was willing to recommend support for. Um, and the cost of the, the revised cost estimates for construction of all the requirements. That gap, um, between what the developer is required to pay and what the town probably should have paid under those original terms of the agreement was about two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Town staff, um, and the developer went through quite a bit of conversations on this and what staff came back to recommending was we feel confident that the, that's from a staff standpoint, that gap could be covered using general fund dollars to not have to go back to our impact fees and our, and our enterprise funds. And so if the board supports that approach, um, that two hundred and thirty-one dollars equates to one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars per lot out of general, uh, fund fees that we collect. We would collect fees at the time of building permit issuance. On average, based on some assumptions for valuation of those, um, home constructions, the town collects about eight thousand one hundred and some dollars uh, per lot in general, uh, fund fees. And that excludes, I put some notes on your attachments, but that excludes the portion that we paid a safe bill for our plan review and inspection services. We didn't want to have to find that we were short, so we took that off the top. We did not account for recurring fees like property taxes. That would be, um, additional revenues to the town, to the general fund. So there's, um, there's evidence in our estimates that there's ample money in general fund to support that if the town board supports it. And the last couple of pages in your agenda packet, um, was an effort to estimate and show in a simplified way each of those, the impacts to each of the impact fee funds, uh, to the general fund, um, under this cost proposal. And the very last chart, um, what you can see is paid in arrears. Um, the town is never going to be in a position where we have to write a check for money that we don't have. The money is collected at the time the building permit is issued. And a portion of those fees collected would be reimbursed to the developer for the cost sharing for public oversizing, oversized and public improvements and offsites in arrears, meaning we have the money the year prior. We'll budget it in your budget process for repayment for the number of permits that we issued in the year prior. So we're never going to be in a, a situation where we're paying a developer for money that we don't have in hand. And the last chart shows you the increment of how much the town would repay total one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more than our twenty eighteen obligation. And in return, the town revenue for all impact fees and general fund fees estimated for those lots is eleven million, seven hundred some thousand dollars. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the ordinance, the final plat, the proposed development agreement considerations, or any other questions the board might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Um, are there any questions from the board on this item? Okay, I will entertain a motion and then open it up for deliberation. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I move that we approve ordinance number one, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second. Oh. You can, you have more?
Thank you. Uh, I moved to adopt ordinance number one, twenty twenty-four approving the final plat for saddleback subdivision. First replat and approving the second amendment to development agreement for saddleback subdivision.
Here you go. Second.
Uh, can I get a point of order really quick? I was just curious, uh, Mr. Sapienza, do you, or Mr. Bird, do we need to list the, um, findings of approval with that as well, or just, uh, just a motion?
I think that's just a planning commission thing. I don't think you do that necessarily here.
Mr. Sapienza's looking something up as well. Um, I think maybe to, to trustee Mason's question. If the board were to find different findings of approval than the planning commission recommended, I think you'd want to, um, make notation of that in the record. Um, if the, if there's support for the planning commission's recommendations, then I don't believe any additional clarifications would be needed.
Appreciate the clarity. Thank you.
Okay. We'll open it up for deliberation now. Trustee Wiegand?
No comment at the moment.
Trustee Gator?
So I think, uh, appreciate the explaining everything, Mr. Bird. That was very helpful. The biggest concerns that I have is the adjustments to the, um, what we're requiring for the dedications in the water. Um, so I appreciate staff explaining with the changes in the sizes of lots. Um, I guess the only area of concern that I have is just, ah, our water funds are in a rough spot. And obviously I know we need more building to help recuperate that. But again, when we're taking money out of those to, um, do reimbursements for things, it's the challenge of we have future projects that need to be paid for, but we're sitting in a current predicament right now. Um, so it's like, we need the funds now, but we also are trying to, um, that's really the only thing that I'm kind of hung up on. I appreciate the changes that were made by the developer. Um, I know I was one of those that had said I'd prefer that we had larger lots. I appreciate them getting them up to that sixty-six hundred for all but three. I appreciate the work on that. Um, and then also I appreciate them reducing, you know, even if it's six lots. A little bit does help a little bit. Obviously one subdivision is going to change everything on that side of the freeway. But if we can help to, you know, shorten things up over the short term, that will help us when we figure out how on earth to fix that bridge. Which is a, like, like we said, that's, that's an issue completely separate from this. Um, so really the only concerns I have is just with the reimbursements. I appreciate that staff has really worked to try and make sure that that comes out well. Obviously the, the end numbers are going to go up because we're going from a hundred and fifty-three lots to two hundred and five. So we're going to be receiving less on a per lot basis, but we'll have more total number of lots. And thank you for laying out the whole numbers because when you're throwing out, we're setting aside eleven hundred dollars. I'm like, oh my goodness. And then you're like, oh, well, we're actually collecting eight thousand. So thank you for pulling this all together. So that's the only concern I have. Um, but it sounds like our staff has gone through and kind of sorted that out. So other than that, I don't have any other issues.
Trustee Mason?
Um, no, I don't think I have any issues. I just want to thank you, Mr. Bird, for, uh, breaking out the, uh, impact fees and town reimbursements. So it was a very handy, uh, handy chart to have there. Um, and, uh, Mr. Robertson for, uh, uh, listening to the board and bringing that, uh, from the two hundred and eleven to the two hundred and five with the, uh, increased lot sizes. But other than that, I'm good.
Trustee Daly?
I am so proud, um, of staff for pursuing these, these new changes and recommendations and from working with Darren. Um, from my perspective, uh, the goal I have is, it, and it's everyone has, but specifically in this scenario is improve the quality of life for residents of Wellington. Um, the majority of the changes that sparked everything that we're considering tonight will improve the cost of living for every resident that chooses to live in this, in this subdivision. Uh, and that's not just for the cost of the home necessarily. That's the cost for their irrigation costs. That's the cost for maintaining a larger lot. Um, this is a great opportunity for new and existing residents to live in a beautiful, brand new subdivision uh, that supports potentially the affordability that they're looking for. So, um, I think this is a wonderful concept. Very creatively, um, has come to this, uh, final, um, option here. And so I think that's really wonderful. Also, um, complying with our current changes since the comprehensive plan was approved between, uh, two thousand and eighteen and now, uh, with all the landscape improvements and the water wise landscaping items, this is really the first uh, development that I've experienced where they fully embrace this and made a way to enforce that. Um, and again, that's going to be helpful for the residents. That, that is, that protects our entire community. That's not just for these residents. That's a safeguard. Um, that is being great neighbors. So a brand new neighborhood that wants to be great neighbors to use water efficiently and have the least amount of impact on the rest of the town based on what's available and what they can do. I think that's wonderful. That's such great neighbors. Um, when it, when we're talking about the actual fees associated with it, we've discussed through budget season, um, how essential it is that we increase revenues. And this developments are the way that we do this. It looks like next year maybe only propose ten, um, building permits. And then of course more years and years following, creating a great pipeline for, for Wellington, for ongoing and sustainable, uh, collection of fees that are again going to serve the entire community. So I think this is such a wonderful concept, um, a great idea for residents. Um, and I also want to talk about other revenues. So we're just talking about impact fees, which are increased for the number of actual households, right? Um, so that one's really obvious. Increase in property taxes, which will definitely benefit Wellington. And one hundred percent of every rooftop in the town of Wellington is also increasing sales tax because those residents are ordering from Amazon. So every single additional net new residence rooftop in the town of Wellington is in itself creating more, uh, revenue from sales tax. Not to mention that I hope that those people embrace the lovely town that we have of Wellington and want to spend all their money here anyway. But, um, Amazon alone is going to be a wonderful improvement for sales tax from residents in this community. And again, it's over multiple, multiple years. So we're talking about ten houses in the entire year of two thousand and twenty-four. And all the public improvements that are involved with it, more parks, more open space and smart open space. Um, that is what we need to do and consider in this climate and this time. So, um, everything that I've heard, uh, is lovely and wonderful. And I think it's a great financial decision. It's a great person decision and it's good for the town of Wellington.
Thank you. Any suggested amendments to the motion this evening? Thanks. Can we please get a roll call?
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-four is approved. And the second amendment to the development agreement for saddleback subdivision is also approved.
Yes, sir. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the title of item D three?
Resolution four dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution levying general property taxes for the taxable year twenty twenty-three to defray costs of government for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the calendar year beginning January one, twenty twenty-four and ending January thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Ms. Patty Garcia, the town administrator, will present this item. Ms. Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and trustees. So this is kind of a redo of something that we did, um, before the first of the year when we were approving the budget. We did receive our, um, final certification from the county. Um, we updated that information into the resolution and including the certification of tax levies for non-school governments, which was submitted today. So this is just getting us up to speed, making sure we have the correct numbers based on the information we received from Larimer County. And Mr. Don Rhodes would love to be here, but we just approved his contract. You all just approved his contract tonight. So he's been waiting to actually work until, till that contract was approved and then we can get busy starting tomorrow.
Thank you so much, Ms. Garcia.
You bet.
Um, are there any questions from the board on this item? Okay. Are there any, uh, comments from the public on this item? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number zero four dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution lev- levying general property taxes for the taxable year twenty twenty-three to defray costs of government for the town of Wellington, Colorado for the calendar year beginning January first, twenty twenty-four and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, any further comment? Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, I had my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Teets.
No, that's okay. I just want to make sure that we make note that we have the additional twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars that we have to recoup for twenty twenty-four and the budget planning that wasn't tentatively planned before. Is there any plan for that?
Absolutely. So that'll be addressed when we, um, bring our, um, the updated budget information after the first quarter.
Perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely. I apologize. I did not bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Teets. Now may I get a roll call?
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and resolution number zero four dash twenty twenty-four is approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the title of item D four?
D four, resolution number zero five, twenty twenty-four, a resolution amending the town administrator contract.
Before we dive into this with staff, um, it's extremely unfortunate that the mayor is unable to attend the meeting this evening. I think he plays an extremely vital role in participating in this conversation. And in respect of, um, Ms. Anderson's time, I would like to make a motion that we table this item until January twenty-third. Second. May I get a roll call, please? I'm sorry. Any discussion from the board on that?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Excellent. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the item is tabled to the January twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regular meeting.
Thank you so much, staff. Thank you so much, constituents. Uh, next we'll proceed to reports. Are there any reports from the town attorney?
No reports at this time.
Thank you, sir. Are there any reports from the town administrator?
Not tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Staff communications are included in the packet. Are there any questions from the board on these items?
I did have a few, and if you need to get back to us on this, and again, I apologize, Ms. Garcia. I've had a crazy last two weeks, so I wasn't able to get these to you early. So, um, let me get back to the top here where I put my questions. There we go. Um, so I had a question on the cleaning services. I know it looks like we're spending about four thousand a month to just get clarification of, because I know in the past we'd had backup months and years that got billed at weird times. months and years that got billed at weird times. Um, so if we get clarification on that, there was one item that the subject was blanked out. It was from the town of Wellington and payments, but, but, and I don't know if that was like a payment for a minor. I know we have different things that get blanked out for the court. So maybe that was what it was.
I think that was, um, for a utility, when it was, um, paying some of the utility, uh, grants. And it had the person that had people's names in it.
That's perfect. I assume that was probably what it was. I just want to double check. I also had a question. Our bill for La Juan was about seven thousand. It talked about travel and hours. I was just curious if we had them come out for something special or if that's just what we normally pay?
So we do have some, but we have a contract with La Juan and they do come onsite, um, three time, two times a week.
Got it.
Two or three.
Two or three. Okay, got it.
I think it's two weeks, two times a week. So we do, there is that, that component that we do pay.
Are they traveling from just locally here in the area or are they like flying?
Brighton. They come from Brighton.
Okay.
So that's, that's the closest we could get.
Um, and then I also saw that we had an Evoqueua for drinking water that we were paying on the bill. I don't know what that was for. I don't know if that's something for the treatment plant or what that was. Um, again, I can email these to you. That way you can get those out, but I just had some questions on those. So.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I do have a question related to page one forty nine on the trustee report for finances. Um, there's two line items here. One says LCD, uh, monitor desk stand MSB. And then another one that says printer paper coffer power street, power strips MSB. Do we know what MSB is?
That's the municipal services building.
Okay, perfect. That's it.
Thank you.
Trustee Wiegand? Do you have anything? Trustee Daly? Trustee Mason? Okay. Great. Are there any board reports? Uh, trustee Wiegand?
Did attend the Laramie County behavioral health and they have opened up the new Longview campus. And just to report since they've opened up and it's only been a little bit over a month now, they've had four hundred and eighty eight visits and that's just from going from nothing to almost a run. And there's three hundred and seventy three walk-ins. So I mean, it's just showing how much of a need that there is. And we definitely have a mental health, uh, crisis here in this, uh, area. And thank God the county has done something on this accord to do that, to confront it. So, uh, I did talk with, uh, our people there and hopefully they've already contacted you. They're going to make a presentation to our board. Uh, did they give you an idea when?
Not yet. I was.
Not yet.
We're, we're, uh, we meet tomorrow as a team to go over future meetings agenda. So then I, I let them know that I would contact them after we did that.
And that way they can kind of go over all their agendas and what they've got planned. And, uh, they got some aggressive stuff into work, so it should be exciting. Thank you.
Trustee Teets?
Yes, I wanted to start by saying happy National Law Enforcement Day to our officers with LCSO and all of the law enforcement, law enforcement officers in and surrounding the community. I know we celebrated national first responders, but today is specifically for our police officers. Other than that, I want to also note that it looks like we had responded to twenty nine calls between the timeline that we did not have active officers on duty twenty four hours a day. So it looks like that it might be coming in handy to have officers available, um, twenty four hours a day in Wellington. So other than that, I hope you guys had a beautiful New Year's and are enjoying the weather down there. I, it's freezing here where we are. So, and see you guys soon.
Trustee Gator?
It's a balmy twenty degrees out here today. I, only thing I just want to highlight, I know I think Ms. Garcia is working on getting an update for transportation out to the board. So looking forward to getting with that. Um, I'm going to be working to put together another meeting with the members of the Hispanic community that were a huge part of doing the transportation survey and study and everything that we did with that. So if any of my fellow board members, I know the mayor has typically come with to those, but if any of the other board members would like to join, please let me know. And then we just make sure it's noticed as a public meeting and, um, would love to get engagement with that. And I know working to get a time set up with Sergeant Cherry as well for them to meet with LCSO and be able to have those conversations. But other than that, uh, looking forward to a new year.
Trustee Daly?
Case, not everybody's aware, and if you're interested in potentially serving on the board that we is in front of you right now, elections are approaching and there is a very specific timeline in order to be considered. Uh, so if you are interested in running for a position on this board, elections will be in April. Uh, please visit our website. There's a very comprehensive guide to give you more information and all the time deadlines. Um, but those deadlines in order to participate are approaching. Um, so please, uh, do that quickly if you're interested. Thanks. That's all I have. Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you. Trustee Mason?
Uh, the Laramie County opioid abatement council is moving right along here into January. Uh, we've got a meeting actually next week. We've had a number of different applicants, uh, grant applicants and presentations by a number of different entities that will be looking at assigning those dollars to. Um, we've also established a, uh, subcommittee that's, uh, that I'm a participant of as well at this point, that we are kind of looking at a number of different entities and trying to, uh, gather regional data as far as, uh, between, uh, Fort Collins Police Services, uh, LCSO, UC Health, um, NCHN, number, number of different entities that we're trying to, uh, kind of, kind of gather all that data together and make some, uh, really quick assessments as far as where, where, where are monies going and, and, and finding the most appropriate and best use of those dollars. So looking forward to that coming up here, uh, next week.
Thank you so much. All right. Having no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand? Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Uh, Mayor Protem, if you want to. Mayor Protem, if you would, please just formally join, adjourn the meeting and call the time.
We're adjourned at eight oh seven.